Select Board's meeting, August 7th, 2018. In attendance is Chairman Dede, Mr. Fox, Mr. Moglen, Mr. Steinhardt, and Cindy Pendleton.
Yeah, you want to get all the swears exactly, so you want them from here? Okay, good. All right, folks, tonight we are interviewing for a sergeant's position. And it's six o'clock. We'll start off with Roger Ardaewini. Have a seat.
How you doing, Roger?
Good, Russ.
Sir?
How you doing?
So, it looks like we have about 12 questions for you. Usually I have a script I'm supposed to read, and I don't have it, so we're going to ask you questions, you're going to answer them.
Okay.
When we're done, you can ask us questions.
Okay.
All right? And I don't know if we're making a decision. We haven't discussed it.
Right.
I'm hoping we probably can. But it would be after our normal routine. It would be at the end of our business today. Wouldn't be right after. That's what we normally do. Got to open that a little bit, sir.
Just to correct.
There you go. Perfect. That open meeting lot thing, you know.
So, do you want to take them down to the lobby?
No.
The other three applicants should already be moving to separate locations.
Right. But I think she's keeping.
Westfield, Granby.
One of them is still going, and one of them is two.
Yeah.
Nobody out there.
No, they are.
Anyone out there now?
Like I said, this is scene two, act three. All right, you ready? Great.
Take four.
Take four. Sir, would you like to start off with the questions?
Why, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Well, why not? Since you got the memo on the shirt, I figured you could.
Thank you. Thank you. Roger, why are you the most qualified candidate for this position? I think it's a combination of things. I have 15 years' experience here. I have a year and a half's experience in Monterey, Mass. I have an education. I think I'm fair with people. And I think that I work well with other people in this department.
And what was it, one year where?
In Monterey, Mass.
Okay.
It's outside of Otis.
Thank you.
Okay. What have you done to prepare yourself for the position of sergeant?
I mean, I'd say the best way that I prepared myself is working as shift commander on the midnight shift for 15 years. I mean, I've done it hundreds of times. Anytime somebody either calls out sick or takes vacation time, I'm able to work in the capacity of sergeant.
And just so you know, we haven't looked at these questions, so we might ask you six different ways the same question.
Okay, yeah.
So, don't look at us and go, "Hey, moron, I already answered that once," but...
Well, that's a good answer, too. We've had that answer before.
Yeah, we've had that. Yeah, "Hey, moron." Yeah. Pretty much me, but that's okay.
Well, that's because they didn't see each other's questions.
No.
Correct.
Right.
Roger, what unique experience do you bring to the position of sergeant?
I would say just being level-headed, able to deal with people in a stressful situation, able to calm people down when they are excited.
How has your education helped you in your role as a police officer?
It, uh, gives you a little bit of background on criminal law, criminal procedures, different ways that domestics are dealt with. And I think it helps with the proper way to write reports.
What is the biggest challenge facing the Southwick Police Department? And how do you plan to address it when you are sergeant?
Can I ask a question on that one?
Yeah.
All right, do you mean in the department or outside of the department with the community?
I'd say, what is the biggest challenge facing? I would say within the department.
Within the department.
And then, how do you plan to address it when you are a sergeant? So, yeah, I would say... Well, I guess you can answer both of those.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, whatever you got. Yeah, what do you got?
My follow-up was, yeah, what do you got? I would say outside of the department, the drug issues that we're having in town with heroin that I never thought was going to be an issue years ago. Obviously, speeding, that's always another issue in every department.
I got a verbal warning the other day. I wasn't...
I know. Is that full disclosure, Mr. Chair?
I did, yeah. I got a verbal.
Okay.
In the department? Uh, I mean, we have a great group of guys that work there. Everybody gets along with each other. But there are some issues with, I would say possibly, the chain of command, where if an officer has an issue, he should be speaking with a sergeant and not going directly to the chief. I mean, the chief has enough things he's trying to do, and maybe the sergeant could settle that issue before it has to go that far.
Understood. Okay.
How do you relieve the stress of the job?
During the winter, I like to go snowmobiling, take a couple days off and go to Maine. I also, you know, take my kids to the park or to the water park or in the pool, to my uncle's pool or something, and I think that relieves a lot of stress. Just getting away from the job and not having my cellphone with me and just relaxing.
Roger, why should you be selected sergeant over the other candidates?
I just think because of my years of experience, my education, my living in town, living in the community, being a part of the community, and the way I can work well with other officers in the department, I think we all get along pretty well. Good.
What does being a sergeant mean to you as an officer?
Well, I can start from the beginning as far as what the duties are.
What does...
I mean, it's being a leader.
Being a sergeant, yeah, that's what I'm...
Being a leader in the department. People should be able to look up to you, should be able to work with new officers, teach them the right and wrong way of doing things. And, I mean, you're in charge of the shift at night. You're the only one there. You can't be afraid to call other people that have more experience than you, calling other sergeants, calling lieutenant, calling the chief if you need to.
Understood.
What do you believe is the difference of being an officer today compared to the role of a police officer 30 or even 40 years ago? I know we spoke to your experience, but not 30 or 40. Which would you...
I mean, I think we're trying to get back to more of the community policing experience, where you're actually out talking to people. I mean, it's different now because you're basically in an air-conditioned car, you're driving around, you don't get to get out and actually talk to people. I mean, I try to at night. You know, if I see somebody walking down the road, I'll talk to them. Sometimes they want to talk, other times they just say, "Do you want me for something?" And they walk away. I mean, it's... I mean, things have changed. I mean, the media really does give the police departments hard times, especially when something goes wrong. They cover that, but when something goes right, they don't cover that. Everybody has cellphones now, there's cameras all over the place, and it's just more difficult. You have to be more careful with drugs, with heroin, that you can't touch it. You have to wear gloves all the time. It's a lot different.
Knowing the shift we are looking at to fill, how will it affect your home life and lifestyle?
As you guys already know, I work midnights anyway, so if anything, it will probably be easier for me. I would be able to be out during the day a little bit more than I am right now. I mean, it's very difficult to work midnights. I mean, it's just a tough shift, no doubt about it. I mean, I worked with Sergeant Crocker and Sergeant Day on that shift, and it's not easy. I mean, the double in the middle is very difficult. But for me, I've already been on midnights for 15 years, so it really wouldn't change much for me.
Okay. Seeing you are... Seeing, I'm going to say this wrong, seeing you are all patrol officers, oh, seeing that you're, seeing that the patrol officer applying for this position, seeing you... Right? Is that goofy?
All the applicants are patrolmen today.
There you go.
So, what other positions and responsibilities have you taken on yourself within the police department?
Uh, I've, I mean, I used to do, years ago, or before I had kids, I mean, things have changed, but now I do the motor vehicle inventories on all the cars I get towed. We do, I do the maintenance on the ATVs. I, uh, we have to do the street lights at night, you know, go down and mark down what lights are out. It's just tough on my shift to pick up extra activities because you can't get a hold of anybody during the day, or at night, they'll be working during the day that you can even contact. It's just, it's not easy to pick up extra activities when you work the night shift.
Okay. Besides all the training the police department has put you through, have you done any on your own?
Yes, I've got, oh, I've gone to college. I do have an education. I'm currently enrolled at Westfield State to finish my bachelor's degree and possibly, when I finish that, possibly go for a master's degree, depending where I am in my career.
Those are our 12 questions. Do you have any questions?
I don't, but I just have, I have a short letter.
Yep, absolutely. It's not a book?
No, it's not that long.
Thank you for not being a book. I do appreciate that.
All right, I just wanted to thank the select board for having the opportunity to interview for this position. I just want to give a background of my life. I was born and raised in the town of Southwick. I still reside in the town with my wife and two children. My mother was a teacher at Powder Mill School for over 30 years. My father was lieutenant colonel of the Massachusetts Environment Police and served for many years as a reserve police officer in South. My brother was a police officer in Granby. He passed away in 1997. I was given the opportunity to become a reserve police officer at Chief La Bombarda. After graduating the Reserve Academy, I self-sponsored myself through the Police Academy in 2001. There were no full-time positions in Southwick at that time. I applied and was hired as the first full-time police officer in the town of Monterey, Massachusetts. In 2003, a position became available in Southwick. I was hired in 2004, and I've worked here full-time for almost 15 years. While I've been able to accomplish a lot in 15 years, there's some things that I wish I could have been more involved in. I recognize the value of community policing, and I wish I could volunteer and attend more of those functions, like the Citizens Police Academy, various police fundraising events, and Safety Day. Working the night shift makes it difficult to attend daytime functions if you want to be rested and alert for my shift. I also wish I finished my bachelor's degree. I'm currently awaiting a mission decision from Westfield State to complete that program because I believe it will only make me a better police officer. This is my second application for sergeant position. The first was in 2012, prior to the birth of my children. And once they were born in 2014, my wife and I decided to focus on our family and not make any changes to our schedules. Now that they are headed for full pre-K next month, I knew I wanted to take this opportunity to become a sergeant. I feel that with my experience of already working the midnight shift for the past 15 years and being shift commander hundreds of times, it means that I understand the demands of this shift. I will be a seamless transition to the department as I will be able to start this position without creating any other job openings. I have the education, the years' experience, and the demeanor to be a successful leader.
Wonderful. Thank you. Any questions?
No, very good.
So, I assume we might make a decision tonight? Like I said, but I'm not, we're not 100% positive. We'll see how it plays out tonight. Appreciate your time. Thank you, sir.
Roger, good job.
Good job. Thank you.
She got the blue shirt memo?
Yeah, no, she got the memo.
I'm the only one who's got that blue shirt memo. Apparently.
No, she's not taking a shirt.
I did.
Jesus. You ready?
Yeah, we're...
Yeah, I think she went to...
Call one with the...
Somebody already got the high sign, right? I think.
Be a slight admission, folks. Please help yourself to a beverage in the hallway.
No ice cream?
There's no ice cream, no. No. I almost got a ticket. I ain't giving no ice cream. What the heck with that?
And everyone thought that you were going to be waiting outside.
Oh, that would have been cute. Yeah.
I'm playing it far ahead.
Yeah. That would have been funny, huh? One way to get them out.
You found us.
Sir?
Sir?
Need a water or anything?
I am all set.
Good, because I don't have any. We appreciate that. All right, so we got like 12 questions we're going to ask you. When we're done, you can ask us a few questions. We're standing by, whatever you want to do. Okay? Don't know if we're going to make a decision tonight. I would like to, but I have no idea what these guys want to do. You know what I mean? So, are you ready? Comfortable? The light's good? Start with Mr. Fox.
All right. Paul, why are you the most qualified candidate for this position?
I believe I'm the most qualified candidate for this position because I've been on the job for just shy of 20 years. I get my 20-year anniversary come September 18th, I believe, this year. I possess a bachelor's degree in law enforcement. I also have a, I'm sorry, I have an associate's in law enforcement from Holyoke County, a bachelor's degree in political science. I've been the court officer for quite some time now. I understand the inner workings of the court and how that particular process works, not only at the clerk's office, but upstairs in the DA's office. I know what'll pass muster and what will not. I've been around the block quite a few times. I've been the senior patrolman for quite some time. Before my current posting as full-time court officer, I would serve as shift commander two days out of my regular week, and that was the status quo for quite some time. So, I was literally the acting sergeant for two days out of my work week until my new job took place as records access officer, a full-time court officer. Those are the chief reasons why I really believe that I'm the best qualified candidate. I also believe that I have the interpersonal skills to be successful on the job.
Thank you.
So, some of these questions may sound the same, but that is what it is. And just a follow-up, do you guys get a pin or anything at your 20-year anniversary? I know FIRE gets these little pins in five and 10 years.
Usually get a hash mark on our sleeve.
Oh, hash mark. That's not a stain?
No.
That's a mark. Okay. All right, good. All right, question number two. What have you done to prepare yourself for the position of sergeant?
I've recently taken a class called Officer in Charge. I did so on my own dime when I got that particular training. I did try to get into some other trainings, however, they ended up being a little too full. I've also been reading the books on leadership recently to help me better prepare for the particular job. I've also, over the course of my career, tried to learn from the people who've gone in front of me, particularly people like Sergeant Landis, Kevin Bishop, and others who had different leadership styles, and I got to learn from them and see how they behave and how they handle certain situations.
Thank you.
What unique experience do you bring to the position of sergeant?
I would, I believe that I've got the unique experience in that before this particular job, I worked in Springfield as a special officer in downtown. I got to see the whole breadth of different activities that occur down there. Also, as I mentioned before, my, I believe that my exposure to the district attorney's office and the clerk's office at the courthouse has really helped me out on that particular level because I'm able to see how those inner workings take place and what the standards are and be able to communicate those standards to the people who are coming through and are going to be submitting things into the courthouse. So, I kind of, I would say that that experience is unique to me that I don't think anybody else in the process really currently has.
Paul, how has your education helped you in your role as a police officer?
It's helped me understand that the law doesn't exist in a vacuum, that there are real-world problems that the law has to be applied to in a fair and equitable manner, but in a practical manner. It's also helped me in terms of being able to find the right answer for the right problem at the right time. In other words, if I don't know, it's given me the ability to stick my face in a book and find out what the right answer is and to do research and to problem-solve versus just off the cuff and just do willy-nilly whatever comes to mind. In other words, a thoughtful approach to what I'm going to be doing. I've also learned, and I think one of the most important classes I ever took in my collegiate career was Police Administration 101. It was taught by Deputy Chief O'Connell from Holyoke PD, one of the nicest guys you're ever going to want to meet. And he taught out of this book that was, like, written in the 1950s on police organization, but it's a tome that really hallmarks how police departments should be run and what police planning is. And it really kind of helped me understand how police departments should work on an operational basis.
Okay.
What is the biggest challenge facing the Southwick Police Department? And how do you plan to address it when you are sergeant?
The biggest challenge for the police department, I think, right now is just being mindful of our place in community. Not that we've ever lost it, not that we're going to lose it, but we have to keep it and maintain it. We have the trust of this community. We have the admiration of this community. They're really on our side, and we have to maintain that relationship. As sergeant, I think my approach will be to try to maintain a customer service attitude towards dealing with people out in the street and dealing with problems when they come in and whatnot. In other words, the person at the lobby is not just some schmo who comes in who's complaining about something. They're a customer. And to try and foster that customer service relationship so that our relationship with our community is the best that it can possibly be. Because honestly, without the community, we can't solve crimes.
Okay.
How do you relieve the stress of the job?
I do something other than work. Me, I like to watch comedy whenever I possibly can. I don't like to watch TV dramas. I don't like to watch cop dramas. I relax and do something other than police work. I don't self-medicate. I don't, I, you know, I do things that make you laugh, that make you relax, and I'll sit and play my piano. And that's pretty much it. I just disconnect from work because if you don't and you're always on, it brings too much stress. Too much stress is a bad thing, and it will keep you from really doing your job.
Paul, why should you be selected sergeant over the other candidates?
Again, I've got the tenure, I've got the years of experience. I've worked with some of the best people that you could possibly imagine over those 20 years. I've got the education to go along with that experience, and I've got the work experience that goes beyond just, you know, just the courts or just going out and just doing regular patrol work. I've put together the video surveillance service for the police department. I maintain it. I maintain the computer administration for the police department. These things are a little bit beyond that of the regular patrolman. Because I've got that experience, I think I'm able to continue on that path and help administer those particular areas.
Okay.
So, you're an officer now?
Yes, sir.
Okay. What does being a sergeant mean to you?
It means that you are the person that provides tools for success for everybody involved at the table. In other words, you're the person who provides a tool for success for the patrolman, the full-time patrolman. You're the person as a middle manager to also provide tools for success for the people above you because if you are successful at your level, they're successful at theirs. That's really your main goal is you want to push people to better themselves, and that's what your main goal as a leader is, is to really kind of... Yourself doesn't matter when you're a leader. You're really pushing other people to be the best that they can be and giving them the tools to do that. I think that's probably the way I would answer that particular question.
What do you believe is the difference of being an officer today compared to the role of a police officer 30 or 40 years ago?
When you were a cop maybe 30 or 40 years ago, it was a little bit more direct. It was like, hey, you go lock somebody up, they make bail, whatever, and you just kind of go about and doing your business. You were very black and white, just kind of do your thing. Whereas nowadays, I think it's far more community-based, it's far more customer service-based than it ever has been, and it's more and more about transparency. I think if you look at all the national news and all the national headlines regarding police, I think that the key theme that you're looking at is transparency, and I think people are really looking forward to that in terms of what they expect of their police and their police department is fairness and integrity and this idea of transparency when police are out in the field doing their thing. Whereas 20, 30 years ago, policing just kind of took care of itself, and that was it.
So, a follow-up question for that. Where do you stand as far as you, and you said it, black and white? Are you black and white on the line? Do you see gray in your colors?
It depends on what it is, and it depends on what the circumstances are.
Yeah.
There are some certain circumstances that are black and white. Take, for instance, a violation of a restraining order.
Yeah.
Don't show up at 123 Main Street. Means don't show up at 123 Main Street. He shows up 123 Main Street, he goes to jail. Are there other grayer areas and other areas of policing? Absolutely. And I think the answer to your question I would best give you right now is, I would think if my actions were on the front page of the Boston Globe, would I be happy with myself or not? And I think that is the best gauge for that particular answer in terms of gray scale.
Right. Thank you.
Paul, knowing the shift we are looking at to fill, how will it affect your life and lifestyle?
It will impact my lifestyle. I won't, you know, shy away from that. It's midnights to a certain degree. There's an overnight there. It's difficult, but at the end of the day, I have the support of my wife, I have the support of my stepdaughter. We discussed this at length. We've even recently moved back to the town of Southwick. So, that transition will make it easier. At the end of the day, it's about the needs of the agency. So, whether that is midnights, a combination of midnights, or whatever shift they decided to be, that's what it is. It's about the needs of the agency and the needs of the town. So, at the end of the day, I'm prepared to do what is necessary because I want to serve. So, the hours are kind of academic. I'll use less than eloquent parlance, I'll suck it up.
Just a quick follow-up. Did you, you had to work midnights probably earlier in your career?
I went, I bounced back to midnights three times.
Okay.
Wonderful.
You can ask a lot.
You don't like this one?
...of different activities that occur down there. Also, as I mentioned before, my, I believe that my exposure to the district attorney's office and the clerk's office at the courthouse has really helped me out on that particular level because I'm able to see how those inner workings take place and what the standards are and be able to communicate those standards to the people who are coming through and are going to be submitting things into the courthouse. So I kind of, I would say that that experience is unique to me that I don't think anybody else in the process room currently has.
Paul, how has your education helped you in your role as a police officer?
It's helped me understand that the law doesn't exist in a vacuum, that there are real world problems that laws to be applied to in a fair and equitable manner, but in a practical manner. It's also helped me in terms of being able to find the right answer for the right problem at the right time. In other words, if I don't know, it's given me the ability to stick my face in a book and find out what the right answer is and to do research and to problem solve versus just off the cuff and just do willy-nilly whatever comes to mind. In other words, thoughtful approach to whatever I'm going to be doing. I've also learned, and I think one of the most important classes I ever took in my collegiate career was Police Administration 101 was taught by Deputy Chief O'Connell from Holyoke PD, one of the nicest guys you're ever gonna wanna meet. And he taught out of this book that was like written in the 1950s on police organization, but it's a tome that really hallmarks how police departments should be run and what police planning is. And it really kind of helped me understand how police departments should work on an operational basis.
Okay. What is the biggest challenge facing the Southwick Police Department? And how do you plan to address it when you are sergeant?
The biggest challenge for the police department, I think, right now is just being mindful of our place in community. Not that we've ever lost it, not that we're going to lose it, but we have to keep it and maintain it. We have the trust of this community, we have the admiration of this community. They're really on our side, and we have to maintain that relationship. As sergeant, I think my approach will be to try to maintain a customer service attitude towards dealing with people out in the street and dealing with problems when they come in and whatnot. In other words, the person at the lobby is not just some schmo who comes in who's complaining about something, they're a customer. And to try and foster that customer service relationship so that our relationship with our community is the best that it can possibly be. Because honestly, without the community, we can't solve crimes.
Okay.
How do you relieve the stress of the job?
You do something other than work. Me, I like to watch comedy whenever I possibly can. I don't like to watch TV dramas, I don't like to watch cop dramas. I relax, I do something other than police work. I don't self-medicate, I don't, I, you know, I do things that make you laugh, that make you relax, and I'll sit and play my piano. And that's pretty much it. I just disconnect from work because if you don't and you're always on, it brings too much stress. Too much stress is a bad thing, and it will keep you from really doing your job.
Paul, why should you be selected sergeant over the other candidates?
Again, I've got the tenure, I've got the years of experience, I've worked with some of the best people that you could possibly imagine over those 20 years. I've got the education to go along with that experience, and I've got the work experience that goes beyond just, you know, just the courts or just going out and just doing regular patrol work. I've put together the video surveillance service for the police department, I maintain it, I maintain the computer administration for the police department. These things are a little bit beyond that of the regular patrolman. Because I've got that experience, I think I'm able to continue on that path and help administer those particular areas.
Okay. So you're an officer now?
Yes, sir.
Okay. What does being a sergeant mean to you?
It means that you are the person that provides tools for success for everybody involved at the table. In other words, you're the person who provides a tool for success for the patrolman, the full-time patrolman. You're the person as a middle manager to also provide tools for success for the people above you. Because if you are successful at your level, they're successful at theirs. That's really your main goal is you want to push people to better themselves, and that's what your main goal as a leader is, is to really kind of, yourself doesn't matter when you're a leader. You're really pushing other people to be the best that they can be and giving them the tools to do that. I think that's probably the way I'm gonna answer that particular question.
What do you believe is the difference of being an officer today compared to the role of a police officer 30 or 40 years ago?
When you were a cop maybe 30 or 40 years ago, it was a little bit more direct. It was like, hey, you go lock somebody up, they make bail, whatever, and you just kind of go about and doing your business. You were very black and white, just kind of do your thing. Whereas nowadays, I think it's far more community-based, it's far more customer service-based than it ever has been. And it's more and more about transparency. I think if you look at all the national news and all the national headlines regarding police, I think that the key theme that you're looking at is transparency. I think people are really looking forward to that in terms of what they expect of their police and their police department is fairness and integrity and this idea of transparency when police are out in the field doing their thing. Whereas 20, 30 years ago, policing just kind of took care of itself and that was it.
So a follow-up question for that. Where do you stand as far as, and you said it, black and white. Are you black and white on the line? Do you see gray in your colors?
It depends on what it is, and it depends on what the circumstances are. There are some certain circumstances that are black and white. Take for instance, a violation of a restraining order. Don't show up at 123 Main Street means don't show up at 123 Main Street. He shows up 123 Main Street, he goes to jail. Are there other grayer areas and other areas of policing? Absolutely. And I think the answer to your question I would best give you right now is, I would think if my actions were on the front page of the Boston Globe, would I be happy with myself or not? And I think that is the best gauge for that particular answer in terms of grayscale.
Thank you. Paul, knowing the shift we are looking at to fill, how will it affect your life and lifestyle?
It will impact my lifestyle. I won't shy away from that. It's midnights to a certain degree, there's an overnight there, it's difficult. But at the end of the day, I have the support of my wife, I have the support of my stepdaughter. We discussed this at length, we've even recently moved back to the town of Southwick. So that transition will make it easier. At the end of the day, it's about the needs of the agency. So whether that is midnights, a combination of midnights, or whatever shift they decided to be, that's what it is. It's about the needs of the agency and the needs of the town. So at the end of the day, I'm prepared to do what is necessary because I want to serve. So the hours are kind of academic. I'll, to use less than eloquent parlance, I'll suck it up.
Just a quick follow-up. Did you, you had to work midnights probably earlier in your career?
I went, I bounced back to midnights three times.
Okay. Wonderful.
You can ask a lot.
You don't like this one, do you?
It is a twister. So seeing that all of the applicants for this position are patrol officers today, what other positions and responsibilities have you taken on yourself within the police department?
I am the computer administrator for the police department. I also administer the video system in the police department, which is really kind of unheard of for a patrolman in any law enforcement agency. It's usually handled by a lieutenant or better. I've handled Class II agent for this particular board. I'm also an evidence officer for the police department. I've been an accident investigator for the police department for fatal motor vehicle accidents. I also register sex offenders for the police department, I'm one, two officers who currently do that. I handle a number of roles for the police department that's beyond just the plain patrol officers per year.
Besides all the training the police department has put you through, have you done any on your own?
Yes. And recently, I did take the one class on Officer in Charge, which was a wonderful class. I took it out towards Quincy back on the eastern side of the state. It was taught by Chief Randolph, Mass. Police, who was a former lieutenant with the Connecticut State Police. I did try to get into some other trainings, but they filled up a little too quickly for me to get in. But I have tried to take some other trainings and just things came a little short.
What was your key takeaway from that, from Officer in Charge training?
You have to do something. It's just not showing up and collecting a paycheck. You have to do something whether you're there, whether it's providing leadership for those people who are there, down to training when those junior people are coming in and they're not sure what to do, or maybe they could be doing something better or smarter. I also learned that you do have to take action. When something's going wrong or going sideways, you have to do something. You can't just sit there and go, oh, I'm the officer in charge, but hey, he's just a cop and I'm just a cop. No, you have to do something. And when that complaint rolls in about that officer, you have to do something, even if it's just taking in the complaint and making sure it shows up at the right place, you still have to treat that person as a customer, not as some malcontent just coming in banging on your window and wanting something done. So what I've learned is it's more than just showing up and just saying, hey, I'm the guy in charge and go do what I said because I said so. It's like you have to be mindful, you have to watch what's going on, and you just have to guide the ship and just get from point A to point B without it going off the rails.
Okay. Any questions? Anything for us?
I prepared a few remarks.
It's not a book?
I tried not to read the Freudian piece.
Yeah. You could read it, as long as you know what you're reading, I wouldn't care. But that's all good. Anyways, continue on.
When I look back to why I wanted to become a police officer in the first place, I think of those who have served as a Southwick police officer before me. I look to people like Bob Loughlin, who was really the first police officer that many schoolchildren in this town came in contact with. He was a figure that was larger than life itself, who was ever present at safety events at school. It left the children in this community the feeling that they were safe and that he was, he and others like him, were there for them whenever danger presented itself. Whenever we came in contact with Bob as schoolchildren, we inherently knew that he was firm but fair. And while he was physically imposing, we all knew that he was approachable and no harm would come to you on his watch. That wasn't all that he did. I remember having to do a report for school and I needed statistics for it. I asked him for help with resources for the project. He brought me into his office, called a person he knew at the state level, and provided me exactly what I needed for my report. This was something that he did not have to do. He could have easily blown me off, gone on patrol and be about his business. Instead, he devoted a portion of his day to me without reward or recompense. He did so for no other reason than to help someone else, and that was rewarding enough for him. I think back to Charles Wolfe. I remember when I was a teenager, I walked into the station to inquire about becoming a police officer. Chief Wolfe stopped everything. He invited us into his office, sat us down, and gave us an enthusiastic talk about being a police officer. He explained the academy process and what the requirements were. He even gave us a copy of the Brown Book, the MPTC publication for the criminal law exam to study. At the end of the day, it was clear that we were too young to actually become police officers, and if we chose to become law enforcement officers, our career would not start for several years. But to his credit, he took time out of his busy day as a chief of police to literally do some positive recruiting for the future. My mother had served on the Board of Healthcare in town, and she took me to Chief Wolfe's retirement party. I was still a teenager. The event was at Shea's up and the place was packed. People came out of the woodwork to attend. State, federal, and local law enforcement from both Massachusetts and Connecticut attended. During the event, I met the district attorney at the time, Matty Ryan, who was accompanied by two troopers. I asked him how one goes about becoming a trooper. He referred me to the two troopers he was with who promptly blew me off. I can say this, that is something Chief Wolfe didn't do. What I gleaned from this party is this, everyone had a kind word to say about Chief Wolfe. It was clear that the people at the party genuinely liked and respected him because at various times in his career, he put them first, not the other way around. I also think to Eddie Sebula, he was the court liaison officer for the police department when I was in college. I once again found myself back at the police department doing research for school. Eddie explained to me what exactly he did as court liaison officer, which as it turns out is more than just shuffling paperwork from point A to point B. He demonstrated that more than casual familiarity with the law and legal concepts are needed for successful prosecution of cases. He showed that attention to detail with respective facts and the law itself is necessary for a fruitful outcome. He even gave me his court liaison officer training manual so I could complete my project for school. He certainly did not have to take the time out of his day to explain to me what he does, but he certainly didn't have to give me his training manual. His presentation of what it means to be a court liaison officer made me redouble my efforts with respect to my studies of all things legal. What all these people have in common and what makes them so memorable is that they were not about themselves. They put other people first. Looking back, it's crystal clear that is service to others, and to steal a phrase from Rotary International, is service above self that makes for a successful public service career. Because these people I have mentioned and others whom I didn't mean to leave out have left this impression with me, I have found that serving this community is a deeply rewarding experience. It is not the traffic citation or the arrest that brings me joy in my job. It is when I have the privilege of driving an elder's vehicle to their home and putting their groceries away when they've been taken away by ambulance and can't do it themselves. Or when I bring relief to a person in respiratory distress by giving them oxygen and other like moments that are truly rewarding experiences that I have had as a Southwick police officer. We have a rich tradition at the Southwick Police Department for fair and professional policing. I am fortunate enough to be appointed, if I am fortunate enough to be appointed sergeant, I will continue that tradition and will work to continue to promote a culture of caring service to the community amongst the ranks of the Southwick Police Department. It is my goal as a supervisor to actively share my knowledge of police work and experience with my fellow coworkers so that they may in turn forge successful police careers. My focus is and will continue to be a customer service-based view of policing where the needs of the public are met with courtesy and professionalism at all times. It is my sincere hope that everyone who has had an interaction with the Southwick Police Department has a positive experience and that they feel that they are treated fairly and with respect. As a supervisor, I will strive to see that the customer experience is exactly that. In closing, I would like to say that it is an honor and a privilege to serve as a police officer in my hometown. I have found it to be a humbling experience to provide police services to so many that I knew through growing up here in town. I am also extremely fortunate that I work with the members of the Southwick Police Department, whom I have found to be some of the best people I have ever known. It is my sincere hope that I am allowed to serve as the next sergeant on the Southwick Police Department so that I may positively impact our continued culture of community-based policing. I want to thank you for giving me the opportunity to interview for this position.
Wonderful. Thank you.
I have certain hope that wasn't too long.
That was perfect. It was actually perfect. So like I said, we may or may not make a decision later tonight, and we're just gonna see how the ball bounces and go from there. Here we go. Excellent.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
See how long this one takes. Next up is Mr. Tagg. So we have about 12 questions for you. Some of them may sound like they're being repeated. They are what they are. At the end, you get to tell us a few minutes' life story about yourself. I don't know if we're making a decision tonight. We may, we may not. It would be at the end of the evening if we do. That's about it. This young man will start the show. All right. You've been through this before, so you know we're pretty casual. Mike, why are you the most qualified candidate for this position?
That's an excellent question. There's a lot of excellent candidates up for this job, and I think what sets me apart is my ability to be personable. I can multitask. I've worked with pretty much every facet of society such as elderly all the way down to our youngest infants by putting car seats in. I was an elder affairs officer prior to working in Southwick. Now, right now, I'm in the school resource, so I have that platform to work with as well as parents of those children. I've put pretty much a lot of my time and energy in getting qualified for this position, such as getting my Bachelor of Science in Criminal Justice. I furthered that education by becoming a defensive tactics instructor, which is a leadership role, going onto firearms, which is another leadership role. And I've gone for an Officer in Charge training, which is specific to being in the middle of the command structure such as a sergeant. It deals with disciplinary issues, peer conflict, high-risk, low-frequency calls such as people pursuits, and just being in the middle of command, like I said, and being able to take orders and give orders. As well as field training officer, I've been a field training officer since 2008. I got certified in field training under the San Jose Model in 2014, which pretty much teaches our brand-new officers how to become a competent, well-rounded officer. And I think that's what a sergeant really needs to be able to do, is really bring our new officers in and officers under his command and really get them to be well-rounded and be a really good officer for all of us.
Very good. What have you done to prepare yourself for the position of sergeant?
Okay. Copy and paste. Yeah, so I mean, basically, yeah, so basically what I've done is, you know, all those things I said, I really put a lot of time and energy into taking on leadership roles. I try to work extra patrols that put me in the shift commander status, as well as most of the time when I'm on patrol from the resource position, I'm the highest ranking on patrol at that point. So when the sergeant's not there, I'm the next in charge, along with all the different leaderships I pre-mentioned.
Thank you.
So what unique experience do you bring to the position of sergeant?
I've watched a lot of Law &amp; Order.
There you go.
I think everybody has a set style of policing. I'm more of a tiered response. When I enter a situation, I start by being calm, because if you're not calm, then nothing can actually be accomplished. No one can learn if they're excited, no one can learn if they're angry. You have to take a situation and calm it down. So I think my greatest ability is to be able to bring a steadiness to any situation. I listen to what everybody has to say. I can take orders as well as give them. I think being courteous, providing good service is paramount to this position.
How has your education helped you in your role as a police officer?
A lot of the education through Criminal Justice has been more of a constitutional guarantees kind of education. We all know that life lessons are the biggest. I think my ability to work with the elder part of our community as well as the younger part of our community has really given me a lot of information on how to learn. We can learn from a two-year-old, you know, all the way up to a 108-year-old. There's a lot of life lessons that we can learn. My two-year-old learns, teaches me how to push my wife's buttons every day.
Okay. I'll be quiet, which is hard. All right. What is the biggest challenge facing the Southwick Police Department? And how do you plan to address it when you are sergeant?
I think the biggest challenge to this police department is continue providing the service and the level of service that we provide already. We've got a lot of excellent police officers that go above and beyond every single day. And I think the way that we can really improve is by continuing more of our community-based programs. I would like to start, or see if we can start at some point, an academy for 13- to 18-year-olds, cadet program such as Westfield has. I know that Granville has one with Lieutenant Rendell's. And maybe start something like that, maybe right after school, so it's not taking up anybody else's time, and then they can still take the Lake West home, so you're not inconveniencing parents or people have transportation issues and things like that.
Can I ask a follow-up question?
Sure.
Why do you think it's a challenge for us to continue to provide that level of service?
Because the level of service that we provide is very high.
Agreed.
Yeah, and that's, and that's, I think, and to keep, continue, it takes a lot of dedication and energy, and you can't let up for one minute.
Thank you. So how do you relieve the stress of the job?
Spend time with family. We like to go fishing, things like that. I'm a trigger sports enthusiast, so I go to the range and things like that. Talk with friends, go out to dinners.
Push buttons.
Push buttons. Yeah. Well, someone else's stress is, let's stress off me, right? No.
Let's not start any trouble.
Not my wife.
I just want to dig a hole for you, that's all. Let's not start any trouble.
Yeah, so we're good.
Oh, boy. Okay, it's my turn. Still had to think about that last one. Mike, why should you be selected sergeant over the other candidates?
I believe that my operating structure is bar none. I can make multiple different roles. I'm good at multitasking. I never, I don't have, I never have, don't have time for anybody. Everybody has a say with me. I respect everybody's opinion. I'm competent, self-motivated. When I always look for the next task. I don't, I'm not satisfied where we are. We can always be better. Everybody can learn. I like to learn from everybody, from the most junior to the most senior officer. I think my skill set with all the extra roles that I've taken over has made me a well-rounded officer, from sexual assault investigator to defensive tactics to firearms. It pretty much gives me a whole well-rounded group of how we investigate crimes, how we operate as a community-based policing, and all the different roles that I played from school resource. I have such a vast and well-rounded training at this point that I think I can pass that down to young officers coming on and officers under my command if I'm chosen, and get everybody up to the highest level they can.
Okay. So you're already an officer. What does being a sergeant mean to you?
Like I said, I think it puts me in a position to really have a good influence on our officers as a whole. It puts you right in the middle of command structure. It gives you a little bit more say with the administration. You can be someone that people can turn to. And I'm not, I don't shy away from that. If there's an issue, I will bring it to someone's attention. You know exactly where you stand with me, for, you know, good or bad. I don't leave things to chance. We're always looking to push forward. What it means to me is to be the person, be a steady rock. And we've got a lot of good potential coming up with Chief Bishop and Lieutenant Lanis taking the helm. I think all of our command set at this point is going to be a great part to be of, and I'd love to be a part of it as a sergeant. And that's what we're going to do.
Thank you.
What do you believe is the difference of being a police officer today versus the role of a police officer 30 or 40 years ago?
I think we're coming back to it, actually. Because 30 or 40 years ago, you knew your beat cop, you knew your town police officers, you knew by name. And that's really where community policing started. You knew everybody. Everybody in the city's had beat cops. Everybody here, I think it's the car that really took a cop away from... Everybody here, I think it's the car that really took a cop away from the community.
We can get down to one more, one cruiser a year then. I appreciate that.
Can we get a segue? I can talk to people, I can stop on the side. No, but, you know.
Yeah.
I think social media has done a large part of that. Has been a big change as well. People think that they can say whatever they want and get away with it. Also, it puts officers more in the limelight. So I think it holds us to a higher standard, even more so than before. It's a little bit harder. People question things more nowadays. It's a different generation, you know, that they know everything already. I wish I was that part, because I wish I knew everything, but I don't. But, yeah, it's one of those things where I think from years ago, it was a little bit easier. Things were slower. You could make decisions and take time, where now, everything's publicized. Everything's in the media. You've got to make a split-second decision. If you mess it up now, you can't go back and fix it before the newspaper gets a hold of it. It's out there and you're done. So we have to be more competent, we have to be better trained. That's the difference at this point.
Thank you.
Knowing the shift we are looking at to fill, how will it affect your home life and your lifestyle?
At this point, positively. Because if the kids are sick, I'll be home during the day. Obviously, you know, midnight's not prime, but the kids are good, they go to bed fine. My wife is a very competent mother, so I have all the faith in her. We have a good family structure where we are, so her parents can come over and help out, and things like that.
Just a quick follow-up. Have you worked midnights before?
I have.
Okay.
I think they all get put on that, don't they?
I think so.
My first, my first three and a half years as another officer was on midnight, so.
Want me to grab this one?
Oh, yeah.
Seeing how all the applicants applying for this position are patrol officers, what other positions and responsibilities have you taken on yourself within the police department?
Many. From, I've assisted in making forms to accurately report sudden deaths and other things such as that, missing children, to firearms instructor, defensive tactics instructor, child seat safety installer, school resource officer, field training officer. I've taken, when I got here, there was a mess of keys for all the elder buildings around town and things like that, and I took those out of the cars, off a key ring, put them into a book. So when we go to emergency, we can open the book, there's a list of exactly what key goes to what. You can run in and help people right away. I put the radar trailer out when needed. Multiple other facets as school resource officer and everything else on top of that. There's a lot of extra stuff that takes a lot of extra time. But I can't think of any way better to show my commitment to the town and the pride of the county for duty.
Besides all the training the police department has put you through, have you done any on your own?
Yes. I volunteered for going for a patrol rifle marksman class that I paid for myself. I've also gone out and done community service on my own, and that has given me a lot of training on different things such as domestic violence and things like that.
That is the end of the 12 questions. Would you have anything you'd like to say?
If I may, I have a pre-written letter, because my memory is not yet.
I'm just not a.
No.
Beautiful.
Okay. Thank you for letting me interview you for this sergeant position, I really appreciate it. I believe that I'm an excellent candidate for this role, as I've been working hard to prepare for it. Throughout my policing career, I've volunteered for a variety of additional roles and responsibilities, ranging from firearms, defensive tactics, and school resource. I know my jobs are easier if I did not take on these additional responsibilities, but I can think of no better way than to display my commitment to the Southwood Department, Police Department, and the community of Southwood. I've continued to expand and improve my skills as a leader through various types of trainings and preferred practices. I have coordinated trainings with various state agencies, local firearm police departments as well. I believe that the best teacher's experience, and I have been afforded the frequent opportunity to work as a, in the capacity of a sergeant as a shift commander. A good leader acknowledges to be successful, we need to work as a team. If I have a question, I'll ask. I also seek the opinion of my fellow officers and those of rank, so I may better my skills as a shift commander. I carefully study and learn from both junior and senior officers and integrate their best qualities into the way I do my job. Every day, I strive to meet the department's mission to partner with the community, provide prompt and courteous service, ensure the lives and safety of all of our citizens, protect our property. I understand that no one can obtain perfection. However, we strive for perfection, we can achieve excellence. And I demand excellence of myself and my fellow officers, the town of Southwood and the citizens of this district, no less.
Thank you. So, not sure what we're going to do, no? We don't have to rise. We're not sure what we're doing tonight. We may make a decision. It'll be at the end of all the regular meeting. We'll go from there.
I appreciate it.
Very good. Take that, Mike.
Thank you, sir.
Good job.
And Mr. Weskow is the last. Do you think you brought the dog?
That would be a, that would be one way of.
Sit!
And I would sit. That's right. I think we'll hear it by now.
Yeah, oh, yeah. Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Good evening.
Have a seat, sir. So we have about 48 questions that we're going to be asking.
We'll be up at seven.
We got 12 questions. Some may be duplicates, just said differently, you know, from before. When we're done, you can talk to us for a few minutes or whatever you'd like, more or less. And I don't know if we're making a decision tonight. I think we'll discuss it later in the evening, once we're done with our regular meeting. Okay. Mr. Fox will start the show.
All right, Mike. Why are you the most qualified candidate for this position?
I think I'm the most qualified candidate, because I've shown that I can make good decisions in stressful situations. I've been working my way, not just up to this position, but hopefully towards the lieutenant's and chief's position. I'm going, currently going for my master's in public administration. I've got one class left, and all's that is, is writing capstone to get my master's. And just my nine years of experience with the police department and then my previous experience with the fire department, I think I'm working that way.
Follow-up. You were here last year studying us, how did we do on the grade?
Which one?
I don't know, you were in here for a couple of shows, right, for class?
Yeah, no.
Writing all about us. I don't know if it was a Bee Gees movie.
I got a name in the class, you guys did fine.
Oh, we did fine. I was wondering, yeah. We never give the grades.
Yes, you did.
Okay, great.
Came and interviewed him.
Thank you. All right, what have you done to prepare yourself for the position of sergeant?
Kind of a follow-up for that. I think the schooling's one of the biggest things, but also I've taken personal development classes for being an instructor. I'm the medical instructor and everything, so taking those classes to speak in front of the guys and lead them in the medical field is one of the ways that I've stepped up in the department to lead.
What unique experience do you bring to the position of sergeant?
Unique experience? I think starting off my career with the town as a volunteer firefighter and EMT really led me down the path of a community-oriented police officer. Instead of out there looking for every little infraction that I can stop somebody on, I'd rather stop the person that needs help and talk to them and go that route than, oh, there's an inspection sticker, let's yank him over and write him a ticket. I'd rather stop and help, oh, that guy's got a flat tire, type thing. Is that where you were going? Trying to think. So, yeah, just that experience of being the firefighter and the EMT first, that's more of a community outreach, public, public-oriented path that I took instead of a more enforcement-based.
Okay.
Mike, how has your education helped you in your role as a police officer?
My education? I think my practical education of being an EMT, keeping that license up and that qualifications there, has helped me most. A lot of our calls are medical-related. And just being able to fill that role of going in as an EMT. Me and one of the midnight guys says a thing, hey, if it's a fight, he'll go first. If it's medical, I better show up first, otherwise I'm in trouble. So that, that training there, I think, is the most valuable. But moving on to the college work and that, it really brings in the, having to learn how to study and resource different things that you need, how to look for different avenues of approach to do stuff.
What is the biggest challenge facing the Southwood Police Department? And how do you plan to address it when you are sergeant?
I think actually the biggest challenge for the Southwood Police Department is the turnover rate that we're going to have. Within the next four or five years, we're losing possibly the top of our department again, after we just replaced them. Me being young, I can kind of be that pillar that stays there. You know, I've got 30 more years here.
Right.
Getting into the, the sooner I can get into a sergeant's position, the more hours I can accrue in that supervisory capacity and stay in that role and just kind of be there. I think that's our biggest, biggest thing right now. I also think that there's really nothing that needs a drastic change. Incrementalism is probably one of the best ways to go. We've been running this way for, well before I was here. Why do we need to come and make a drastic change? Just little steps here and there could go a long ways.
So, of course, my follow-up question, without you turning around, is how old do you think the upper echelon is?
It's not how old they are, it's how many years of service they have. And they've earned the right, they've earned the right to retire whenever they want.
So they should go when they hit those years?
Oh, no, they can stay as long as they want.
Oh, I was just wondering.
I like working with them, I have kind of the same philosophy as the chief.
They could apply to have us extend it longer, too.
I'll sign up for it.
I mean, you never know. Just wondering.
Yeah.
Follow-up. I don't have to go to work tomorrow with them, you do.
That's all right.
We're not going to question gray hairs or anything.
No, God, no.
I was just going to ask how they're feeling back there.
I don't know. Is it dark yet? I don't know, shouldn't they be here? Or maybe it shouldn't be. I think the bus already left to pick them up.
It's not quite, that's after seven.
They just got run over.
They did get run over, yeah, but they got the plate number. Well, he does have the medical side, so that's the good news. Yes. I don't know if he's going to bring them back, but he'll be there. That was five, okay.
So, Mike, how do you relieve the stress of the job?
Just hanging out with my wife and kids. The job is very stressful. I think I handled it well, but there are times where it gets to you. And whether it's outdoor activities, going on a hike, going camping, just hanging out is hanging out and work. The last two days being stressed out over this, I split more firewood than I have all summer. So, just physical activities, work, whatever it is, just keep your mind going.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other than knowing where I'm going to get firewood now.
So we should put this off by three weeks.
Right.
Mike, why should you be selected sergeant over the other candidates?
I think it goes towards how Chief Bishop kind of runs the department. He's very community-oriented, and I follow that same path that he is, I believe. I believe we'll work well together in looking at those avenues. My experience, I'm the youngest guy going for it, but I still bring a ton of experience. I bring the experience of the medical department, and that's everything from the training. I do all the training, I do all the record-keeping, I do the inventory of all the, all the supplies and materials, so I can bring that, all that experience with me. I'm experienced with the accounting department, as I write all the budgets and everything for the medical. I've also, with the K-9 position, I started writing grants, and I just got one. So that experience in those positions, I can bring over as a sergeant. And just being able to talk to people. It's, I'm very approachable, I feel.
All right, so you're already an officer. What does being a sergeant mean to you?
It's kind of a validation of I am doing what I should be doing at the job. All of us already pretty much do the job when we're shift commander. It's just a step saying, hey, you are doing a good job, here you go. And what it means to me is, the biggest thing for me for being a sergeant is getting that experience in the command staff to work towards, hopefully, one day, being the chief or the lieutenant.
What do you believe is the difference of being an officer today compared to the role of a police officer, say, 30 or 40 years ago?
So we're going to be well past seven. It's a, it's a huge change. I mean, gone are the days where you can just grab somebody, throw them in the jail cell, and be done with it. There's way more community outreach programs, there's having to talk to everybody, having to be the mentor, the psychiatrist, the parent. A lot of these families that we go to, my kid's misbehaving, well, step up and do something. And we have to kind of fill that role, because a lot of these parents don't fill it themselves. So it's completely changed from before. It's, from what I've read, I haven't been around that long.
You could ask your fathers behind you.
Yeah, I'll ask the guys that are retired. But it's very, I see it swinging way over to the other side of being more of a community activist and an outreach than being strictly enforcement. I think that's where it's changed.
All right. Mike, knowing the shift we are looking at to fill, how will it affect your home life and lifestyle?
I think it'll actually be very beneficial to me. I started out on midnight, and I was there for years. I love the shift, I love being able to, you know, go to my kids' ballgames, be coaching, coaches for them and that kind of stuff. Now I'm on straight second shift, and a lot of the stuff I used to do at night, the community outreach stuff, the being a coach and being at the fields, and that is really kind of hindered by being on straight seconds. I think that the mix of seconds and thirds will give me that balance of, you know, still working those shifts, but being able to have the family life and the, being able to volunteer in the community again, or more, I should say.
Seeing how all the applicants for this position are patrol officers, what other positions and responsibilities have you taken on yourself within the police department?
So I'm on the dive team. And with the dive team, I also am in charge of maintaining, I got certified to maintain all the regulators and stuff, so I do all the work on that. My biggest thing is being the medical officer. The medical officer, like I said, I do everything from scheduling, training, making sure everybody's up to date. Anytime a defib or equipment's used, I download it, I have to record all that stuff. I write the budgets for it, I do everything it takes to keep the medical running in the department. Another huge thing is, now I'm a K-9 officer. That entails way more work than I thought. But it's, it's manageable, and it's something that I like doing. It's great having the dog and working with him, but that's another avenue that I've taken.
Besides all the training the police department has put you through, what have you done? Put you through, have you done any on your own?
Yeah. For like the designated marksman for the department, I went on my own time, and I've, I paid for the class. I went there, and I got the extended patrol rifle class. I keep my EMT cert up on my own, so I go to classes at the fire department still, or I'll do online classes to make sure I get all my credit hours, so that I can keep my EMT cert up on my own. All the classes for, at Westfield State for my master's degree, I've done all that training. Um, all the classes for, at Westfield State for my master's degree, I've done all that training. I'm constantly training, constantly doing something. I approached the chief the other day about I'm only able, I'm scheduled to go sixteen hours a month for K-9 training. Um, so on top of that, I asked him, I said, hey, I'd love to go more. Is it okay if I go on my own time? And he graciously said, yeah, go ahead. So like today, I was there from eight AM to noon on my own time training the dog just to keep active and keep going with the dog team. So I'm constantly training, constantly taking classes.
Wonderful. Where do you train with the dog?
We're all over. Today we were in Wilberham. Last Tuesday I was up in Pittsfield. We go all different locations to get them into different environments depending on what we're trying to accomplish that day. Today we were at Memorial School in Wilberham and we were doing stuff inside and out.
Thank you.
Are there more dogs your age, your dogs' age?
Yeah, there's three of us that just got the, that went through the same class and everything, so we're kind of in a group together and then, yeah.
That helps.
Yeah.
All right, so that is the end of our questions. Do you have any?
I do. If you don't mind, I'll be quick.
Oh, that's fine. It's not a bore.
Gentlemen, I would like to take a few minutes to thank you for allowing me to take part in these interviews. And I would like to close with a quick overview of why I feel I am the right candidate for this promotion. To write this letter, I sat down and reflected on two things. What makes a sar, a good sergeant and why I think I would be able to perform well as a sergeant. I thought about this for a while and came to the conclusion that it's not easy to sum up what makes a good sergeant as the job is way too dynamic. So after realizing I would have to speak for an hour to cover it all, I figured I would pull out a few highlights which I felt were important. A sergeant must be dedicated to the community and the job. They must care about the officers they work with and the community they serve. They above all else, uh, must be a peacemaker and be able to think, act, and communicate effectively with all involved in some of the most stressful situations. After reflecting over this for a while, I believe that I am the candidate that can fulfill this for the following reasons. Dedication. I have been dedicated in serving the town ever since I joined the fire department in nineteen ninety-nine. I continue to serve and am active in the community and can be regularly seen out and about in the town. I also volunteer for many activities within the community and at the schools. I believe that my dedication is also evident through my new position as the K-9 handler. This job, just an additional assignment for of regular patrol, requires countless hours of training, preparation and the community service, a lot of which goes unpaid. I have heard that some questions, whether the K-9 position would take me away from my function as a sergeant. Um, I would like to assure you, it will not. Since General and I are now fully trained and nationally certified, we are only required to complete sixteen hours a month of maintenance training. I am also open to working out an MOA with Chief Bishop to include a training schedule that will benefit all as I have been working without an MOA since I was appointed as a K-9 officer back in September. Also know that many handlers, including myself, feel that the sixteen hours of training is simply not enough time to maintain an effective team. With this thought, I've already requested and been granted permission from Chief Bishop to intend additional K-9 training on my own time. Caring for fellow officers in the community. For my family in blue, they know that whenever they need me, I am but a phone call away. Whether it's just a quick question they have about an incident or a medical call, or whether they need me to respond with them to the hospital for an accidental exposure or other need, they know that I will be there. For the community, this is my home where I was born and raised. I am constantly interacting with members of the community, fielding questions and lending a hand whenever possible. When I interact with the citizens, most of them get my personal cellphone number and an invitation to call whenever needed. I feel that my background as an EMT and firefighter in the town has also moved my style of policing to a more community-oriented officer instead of an enforcement-based officer. The last portion I highlighted, I feel, is the most important. To be a peacemaker and be able to think, act, and communicate effectively with all in some of the most stressful situations. I believe my ability to keep calm in stressful situations and act appropriately is evident through my previous interactions within the community and with the men and women I serve with. I try to treat everyone as family and do whatever I can to help them out. Some of these stressful situations were my toughest days on the job. However, I would not trade them for anything as they have also been my most rewarding. One such incident was when I had a young man pull a large kitchen knife at me and advance towards me. After drawing my service weapon and calling for backup, I was able to keep calm and communicate with the family involved. I decided to go to a less lethal option. I then drew my OC and went hands-on with him until Sergeant Sanders, then Officer Fisk and Officer Malone were able to arrive and assist me with subduing him. Our combined actions and quick thinking turned what could have been a tragedy into a positive outcome where the young man and his family were able to get the help that they needed. A second more trying incident for me, sorry, so much, was when I had to tell a young lady who had found her mother in response of on the floor that she had in fact passed. I will never forget the shriek that she, that a little girl that out. During that time, it was found that her family was in California and couldn't come take care of her. Um, luckily through the job, I was in the right place at the right time and we were able to take her in. Um, it was great, the support from the police department with people stopping by. My wife, she immediately said, of course, bring her home and, uh, we were able to take care of her for about a week until I came home. And, uh, sorry, she gets me still. Those are but two of the many incidents which I believe I have been able to make a difference in. Through decisions and actions like these, I will lead by example and hopefully set the bar for those to follow. In closing, thank you for your time and consideration. I know you gentlemen now have a difficult decision to make while trying to select who you feel is the best candidate for the position, but rest assured, each and every candidate who interviewed, interviewed here tonight can and will do whatever is asked of them as a sergeant. They all bring strengths and expertise unique to themselves and I will be honored to continue my dedicated service to this town alongside them in any capacity. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, brothers.
Thank you, sir.
Justice.
All right, that concludes our interviews for now. It is seven point. Hope the room clear out.
Take a five minutes.
Sure.
Thank you.
Let's take a five-minute break. And we'll re-do it. Can show it to you?
Yeah.
We're back, folks. It's seven twenty-two, we're right on schedule for our seven PM meeting. And, uh, first up though, we want to do a moment of silence for Kenny Larkin and Skip Landis and, uh, my, my elder. Apparently we have elders in the room tonight, so Elder Fox will give us a.
Well, we've lost two good people. Uh, I happened to be on the board when Skip was hired as a dispatcher. I think I was only twelve years old at the time. And, uh, but Skip was, uh, he was one of a kind. Uh, he never, any emotion. Back then, we used to walk into the police department when it was over at the one building where everything was all together. Skip would always have a, a good, uh, smile or a laugh or a joke. You know, and he was just a wonderful human being and I got to run into him because then after he retired in later life, he was delivering flowers, you know, so I'd run into him and we'd chat, but, uh, he missed, he lost a good one. And then, of course, Kenny Larkin, a longtime member of our volunteer fire department. Uh, Kenny was also very active in, uh, local politics. As you know, we're a partisan community. He didn't happen to be on the same side as me, so we had some spirited debates over the years. But, uh, he did forgive me at the end and, uh, as a matter of fact, I had just spoken to him, uh, a few weeks ago and and we've. And, oh, yeah, very active in the Lions, a very, uh, very dedicated, uh, member of the Lions organization, so. Uh, Mr. Chairman, we lost two good ones. A moment of silence?
Sure.
Thank you.
Yes. And next up we'll do, I guess, public comment because I didn't see it here anywhere. If anyone has anything they want to say. State your name and address and, uh, we'll gladly listen. Wonderful. Thoughts on it further?
No, it's dead. You did it.
I did it? Wonderful. All right, so first up we'll do the continuation hearing for the Manoli Pizzeria and Restaurant, LLP DBA Village Pizza regards to transfer of the alcohol license. Like we said, the applicant will, will resubmit in the future for a hearing on a much more expanded application to accomplish more actions to secure the license which will include alterations of the premises and that's probably why he's pulling it off because he wants to do some design work. All right, so we need to make a motion to.
You have to accept his request to withdraw. So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
We need to sign it.
You can if you want.
You want to sign it? Go ahead, sign it. Okay. Next up will be wilderness experience for sewer abatement. Come on up, folks.
How you doing, Scott?
Doing well.
Hey, Laura.
If you care.
Yeah, I know you.
She's in the woods.
She's in the woods for that thunder in the night.
All right. So you guys basically are in front of us because you thought you might have had a water leak a couple of months ago and you weren't really sure.
Not initially.
It got mumbled here a little bit about a sewer abatement and we kind of chuckled and said, oh, here we go. You know, you get your feet wet leaving the pool and now you guys want to discount that off your sewer bill. Unbelievable. Then this one, I know you actually have a real bad water.
A thousand gallons a day.
Thousand gallons a day?
Yes, it was a nightmare.
I've done like all the testing and all the pipes and
Yeah.
I think I've figured out the problem, uh, and I've got it down to a couple hundred gallons a day, which is down significantly.
Yeah.
But I can't do anything like to fix it permanently until we draw the pool down again. So.
End of the season, I think?
We do it like every three years.
We just did it last year.
Yeah, we just did.
Wow.
We're kind of stuck.
Yeah. And now you have a separate meter on the pool.
Right, that was put in the end of May.
Right.
Which allows us to track everything.
Yes.
Exactly what water's going into the pool and what water is generally being used through the bathrooms.
Right, right.
And then a splash out, I guess we'll figure for splash outs as well.
Yeah, but it's the, the bottom line is that water's not going in the sewer system.
No, absolutely not.
And unfortunately in this town, um, we don't have any mechanism in place for that. I mean, you're probably, you're the only pool in town or maybe American in that one.
Well, they have a therapy pool.
But I don't know.
They have a therapy pool that's maybe three feet deep and not very large.
Oh, not a pool compared to what you have. I'm sorry.
They're not in sewers.
They have a hot tub that's on hold.
You're not on.
Yeah. Oh, no, 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 sewers either. So, yeah, you are the only situation like this. But it's no different than folks that probably water their lawns off of the town water and then pay their sewer portion of it and scratch their egg. So I think in the future we'll have to look at that regardless if there is a way to break that out. But the good news is you put a meter on the pool, so now you know exactly what the pool is using and what you're not using. Okay. So, number-wise.
We were requesting to go back to the last two bills.
The two bills and you actually applied for both of those abatements.
Separate forms, abatement forms. It's just, it's not the water aspect, just the sewer.
Correct.
Yeah.
And in front of me is I got first, but did, what, do you make, Randy, can you break this down for us?
That was in the chair.
You don't mind?
Sure. So they
Sorry.
As they mentioned, they put a new public pool here, right?
Yep.
And two, a little bit more. So I gave you a summary today of what the total usage has been into the building. Then also how much of that has also gone through the pool. So basically, then what, what the intent is, everything that's going to the pool is staying in the pool area. It doesn't go back in the sewer system.
Correct.
So, based on these numbers here, uh, since May twenty-fourth, um, there have been an average of five hundred and seventy gallons per day, uh, going into the pool area. Uh, uh, and, and then of that, well, and then going to the building is seven hundred and seventy-three gallons per day. So about seventy-four percent of the water going into the building is going to the pool area and I guess, say, staying in the pool area, not going back in the sewer system.
Right.
So.
Okay, so you want to go off a percentage?
If that's what yours, I mean, I, I'm not sure how would you like to proceed with this, but that's one option.
Right.
Um, you know, Scott did mention that, you know, the town tweaking their, their area.
The problem's not resolved, but, so, so moving forward, the following billing cycle is gonna come in for an abatement for the three hundred gallons a day that you think it's going through, or the two hundred, or are you comfortable with?
Unless we could bill separately, you know.
The way, the way it's set up now is we can bill separately.
Okay.
So as of, you know, May twenty-fourth, we can track and we can get them an accurate bill or bill that breaks up their water use versus their sewer use.
Okay.
So we're in a new.
So moving forward, I think we're okay. Yes, I think the question is going back to these last two bills.
Correct. Okay, so moving forward, we have a plan in place. And you're comfortable billing them that way?
Yep.
Okay, we don't need, does have any, uh, anything written up for that? Will this cause other people to come forward with their lawns and saying, Jesus?
We have, well, we have, you know, we have a secondary meter policy.
Perfect, so that, that covers that.
Which is more, more directed towards residential properties, not commercial properties.
Right.
But I think we can use that same policy process to.
All right, so you're comfortable?
Yeah, absolutely.
Wonderful. All right, so we're just looking at those two months. And you feel that whatever the total bill is, seventy-three percent of it was going into this?
Based on their actual usage, yes.
Yes. So that, that covers that.
Which is more, more directed towards residential properties, not commercial properties.
Right.
But I think we can use that same policy process to.
All right, so you're comfortable?
Yeah, absolutely.
Wonderful. All right, so we're just looking at those two months. And you feel that whatever the total bill is, seventy-three percent of it was going into this?
Based on their actual usage, yes.
Yes. You guys are comfortable with that?
Absolutely.
Okay. So let's do this. Let me run the numbers this week and figure it out. Is that fine? I was just sitting here trying to, because we're behind as it is. Um, so do we need to make a motion for anything or do you want me to?
I think, well, I think the board can authorize the chairman to, uh, run the numbers and calculate it with the DPW director and then file the value of what the abatement would be. Then you can always ratify it at a future meeting.
Perfect.
Because they've paid the bills.
Oh, absolutely.
That's why they're entitled to ask for it to be abated.
Yep.
It just needed to be evaluated and it took a while to evaluate the site.
For the testing.
They had to bring in consultants and then Randy had to use the, the tools he has through the Water Commission with the second meter policy.
Yep.
So that seemed to be the way that's allowed you to now want to.
All right, so I need a motion to let me finish this project.
Full disclosure, I mentioned before, my daughter works for the oldest experience.
Very well.
I will not make the motion.
So move. I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. What a suggestion. All right, I'll get back to you guys within a week or so. And, uh, figure that out. Thank you. I appreciate the patience. Thank you, Randy.
Appreciate your statistics.
Stepping up and all those with this.
Thank you.
Hopefully it's the only one we have with that kind of project. All right. Acknowledged payable warrants one nine oh three B dated seven thirty eighteen in the amount of two million, nine hundred and ninety-eight thousand, four hundred and fourteen dollars.
Just school assessment, research.
I see they bought this school guy rented out. That's nice. Acknowledgement of payable warrant one nine oh three dated eight six eighteen in the amount of two hundred and twenty-six thousand, five hundred and eight dollars and eighty-three cents. Okay. Regular session minutes for seven twenty-four eighteen.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Executive session minutes. Need a motion?
Has amended.
Has amended? What can you say?
Uh, one of the members in attendance, others in attendance is spelled incorrectly.
What's her?
Okay.
No?
Yeah.
I could be wrong.
Which one? I'm the worst all in the world.
First one, isn't it? I'd have to look it up for sure.
Oh, yeah, that, that doesn't look right, even for me.
Oh, it doesn't. Yeah. Yeah, I can. Okay, we'll re spell that. Just the spelling name on one of the, one of the attorney's names. That's, so move.
Correct. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Wasn't Fred's name.
No, no, yeah. That threw us off. All right. One A is a discharge of lien on real estate, which I already signed, so just need to reaffirm that.
So move.
Second.
Aye. And that was, um, Four Voice Road, Suffolk, Mass. PBPC. For the PBPC. Alright, 2A, writer's first refusal.
So reaffirm.
Reaffirm, Nebraska, Nebraska, wow. Yep. So I need to reaffirm the writer's first refusal under chapter 61A, and it is for the...
Nebraska.
The Bro, who's it say, the Nebraska property?
So move.
Second with a comment, I mean, on those, um...
That was a while ago.
Well, it wasn't, we, we signed it maybe within the timeframe of the last two meetings, but on those, the failure of the attorney to do his paperwork and his homework doesn't create an urgency on the part of the selectmen or other board to come in and rush those through. They need to do their homework better on those.
Should we send the letters to the attorney?
No, because there'll be a different attorney next time.
Okay.
A lot of attorneys don't know when this is going to...
They don't until they get to the closing or the day before. Some title guy says, you didn't do this, and then they're rushing in here, going door to door to get everyone to sign that needs to get signed.
Right. Okay, next up, a request for replacement of signage on town property. So that's...
Yep, from the consultation?
Yeah.
And of course, under the zoning bylaw for the signage, you actually have to approve under this.
Okay. So in front of us now...
It's sort of like a plaque.
Yeah, well, that's, that plaque is more of a, um, it's a museum piece, that's a, it's a work of art. Just like the dump truck in the back without the rear end in it, that's a work of art too. So hopefully it doesn't make it to the front to get connected to that plaque. Stranger things have happened. Alright, so your approval? Yeah, so minimum you have, okay. So the first up is the Pawlary Southwood Animal Control Facility. This is due years, it looks like it's finally getting somewhere. You don't have that?
I'm...
Look at it, but I think it's got to go this way, depending on how you look at it with the...
No, I'm, she's castizing me for using that holder.
That's the first one, right?
I just did...
This is three. Okay, well, this is what's in front of me.
That's alright.
There's a queue in order, but he doesn't...
Looks like they're putting a wooden sign up. I know Mr. Pawlary is going to work on it with the elders at the police department. I believe that...
Well, the turnover's so quick over there.
It is, you know? And I don't know why they get a long, big stack of business cards either, they should get like a smaller stack.
You should get them 10 at a time.
I would, because you just don't know. But that's, that's my opinion. Alright, so I'm sorry, all I have is...
So did, um, yes, Mr. Steinarke, do these signs comply with our sign by law?
Um, Kevin, Kevin had worked with the, uh, the town planner, right? Kevin met with the town planner.
Okay.
So that was a non-answer to my question?
I believe it does, sir.
Well, he would be giving the advice on the dimensions of a sign to be approved, just as he does for every...
Well, I'm so sorry, you don't even have it in front of you.
I, I've seen, I saw the drawing.
Apparently they have a satellite picture taken somehow here, it looks like maybe they used the drone.
They probably did get that drone.
Yeah, they got the drone that we don't know about. But it looks okay there.
Perfect.
The snow might cover it a little bit, but that's fine.
Yep.
Yeah, there's a few months out of the year where it might...
Might just say animals.
Well...
Well, we're used to that too.
This moment, if there is water attached to it, is that the, uh, our caller sent a, uh, assigned paperwork and saying that the county department approved of this request also, along with after meeting with the planning board.
Well, that's wonderful.
Right, but the town exempted itself from its own sign by law?
Yes.
That's why we have the debacle in front of the DPW garage? Sorry, Randy.
The amusement piece?
So, um, I'm entitled to my opinion.
Were you on the planning board?
I was on the planning board when Marcus wrote the... Well, it was, you have to, it's a little give and take.
You're, oh...
Little give and take. But, uh...
I need to thank you for the give and take, because it looks nice out there. Alright, so, so we don't have to approve these, is this an FYI?
No, you, you have to vote on both sides.
Alright, so motion to approve Pawlary signs?
So move.
Second.
Alright, and then the other one is...
3A, which is right.
Which I took out of turn, yeah, it's 3A.
It's the next, it's the next section, right there, that is that.
Oh.
And that's the self-announced.
That's for the self-announced keeper out there.
Those are nice looking signs.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah.
Well, they have a budget for that?
Concomit.
It's interesting, that second one, I was a little weary about the 25-foot frontage we have that we're going to put a sign up, because people are trying to find the 11 acres in the back. I don't see that sign staying long. But, it is what it is.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Great. We can wait a while. Alright, 5A is a planning grant, engineering services. Mr. Brown, what is it?
Uh, this is a municipal vulnerability preparedness program grant we talked about several months ago. We need to go through a process where we become an MVP certified community. Once we do that, then we're eligible for more grant funds that are only available to those MVP communities.
Great.
So this consultant will help guide us through the process to become certified. There's a workshop that'll be hosted through the consultant with myself and other town, town heads, department heads. And we'll talk about some of the issues with, you know, identify areas where we can see improvement that could benefit the, we could benefit the program.
Yeah, areas to improve on. So the board needs to authorize itself to sign it?
Need a motion?
So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
6A is the Granville Road culvert replacement engineering services project, it looks like. Um... Looks like the amount is 465,000, and the funds are available.
Yeah, that's between, what, chapter 90 and the general fund money, right, Randy?
Yeah, that was appropriation at a town meeting.
Right, so this is the, uh, that was a year-end appropriation of money that you put toward it.
Right.
So now you have to go forward with the engineering part to get it ready to go out to bid, and also oversee it during construction, so...
So I need a motion to...
Board needs to authorize the fellows to do that.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Do you have the gentleman go out?
I know I can do it.
What's that? Was that what that is? I thought it was a box.
This is chairman, before we move on, since we have the DPW director here and the chief of police, um, I...
What you got?
Well, I was going to bring this up under, uh, new business. Uh, when we had a discussion the other morning with Randy and Chris, because of all the projects going on in town, there was no police detail available to help with the paving. And so our, our guys had to go up there to direct traffic. And I asked about the possibility of flaggers and maybe establishing...
Citizens?
Establishing either there's a company where we could call for flaggers, or establishing or training our own, uh, flaggers within the community. So Rose and I are having our...
Can we get detail guys from out of town?
Yep.
Can we go so far?
Right.
Oh, so we tried.
Oh, we get every day.
Right.
Every day we're doing.
Yeah.
But I mean, instead of...
This business is booming for those guys.
But instead of having our guys that, we want out patching roads and doing their work, and getting the pay they're getting, directing traffic, I'd just like to throw it out there, perhaps we could have some future discussions about doing something like that.
A different tool in the toolbox.
Correct. Or you, I look at you. You have that, you have the guys downstairs that, I, you know, there's no reason we can't start looking at those folks. CMA, is that emergency management? What's it called? Auxiliary? You know, we allow them to have a gun, and I'm not saying they should take shifts, but, and I don't know how union contracts work, I don't want to know. Overall...
Kevin could look at that.
Yeah, yeah, but there's, there's, there's always a few guys around that.
You satisfy everyone else along the list.
That's all you have to do, operate to...
The union seat, but the reserves.
Right, and I'm not saying every guy downstairs is perfect, or the guy, but, like, Rush, you're right, we have, there's some other...
I'm just saying, we know we got a problem in...
Their use is solely under the purview of the chief of police.
Understood, but just, you know, like, you're still getting your, your feet on the ground, young man. And you don't mind if I call you a young man, right? Get no one else in the room asking me. But, yeah, you should start looking at all those avenues. And I don't know if we can have flaggers.
At state level, they can't even get flaggers themselves, because even on a state job, they're mandated to use a certain amount of flaggers during that construction job. And that, with the meeting we held, and they said it's useless, even making a phone call. The last time they got one came from the Cape, it comes working. Those are your state certified flaggers.
Can we train our own flaggers?
Don't worry, that's again, Fred, and take a look and see what the state standard, I mean, to be a state certified flagger, it's a very intensive school to go through, and the pay scale, you're not saving any money for the contractors, they're actually in the paying more for their flaggers than you do for your local, uh, police department.
I think we saw that when we looked at the last, Fred.
Is there a local class for that?
Last chief of the...
I don't even know, again, it's all...
MOA, we had to deal with on that issue.
You'd be flattered.
No, I mean, if, if you could, you know, again, you're the lawyer, you're the chief, you're the DPW director, so you give me guidance, but if we could train our own municipal flaggers...
So we, we can begin looking at these.
Okay.
I know you've been wanting to retire, can you do that?
Well, I'm thinking...
Can you do that? I don't know.
I'm planning for the future.
How's your flex? You got, you got it yet?
Wait a minute.
Can you do the dance and all the whole nine yards? Look at, yep, oh, look at that.
So you got twisted.
That's low on the hands?
Slow stop, slow stop with the thing. You got to get it all down.
I want it fiberglass, so it's light.
It's light, of course. I, I wouldn't want you to hurt yourself, and I wouldn't want you to have any health issues by doing it. So yes, whatever accommodations we need to make for you, it would happen for everybody.
Let me just say that Attorney DuBray, when he's no longer working in town, and I'm no longer on the board, he will represent me.
Oh, wonderful. Wonderful, that'd be lot seven at the cemetery. Okay. Alright, so 7A, the clerical union, would like to request taking our half day before Christmas and our half day before New Year's, and combining them into a full day off. To be used, the day before Christmas, December 24th.
That's what I was, is that was, is Christmas is a Friday this year?
Wow.
Yeah, because otherwise you're opening everything up for a half, no, a half day, because it's a half day anyway.
So I'll, I'll make that motion, gladly, to save on energy and let everybody enjoy the holiday spirit.
I didn't know you were a fessed-up little guy.
I know, I know.
Imagine that. Is there a second?
Sure.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Do you have to sign that now?
Yes.
Alright. This is a memorandum of agreement, 8A, between the town of Suffolk and the International Association of Firefighters Local 4919. And they're looking for, we're looking for an extension?
Yes, an extension of an earlier one the board had signed, that the police chief and the union feel it needs to be renewed for a period of time.
Okay.
So move.
Need a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Do we all sign it?
Nah, the chairman.
I'll just take the chairman. Motion for the chair to sign.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
9A is a, uh, a request, a donation on behalf of the Suffolk Fire Department. So Rose Ellen Sweeney is donating a hundred dollars, and it looks like it's to the Suffolk Fire Department. It doesn't say which division, interestingly, okay. So need a motion to accept?
So move.
Second and thank you.
Yes, there is a thank you letter already written, I think. All those in favor?
Aye.
I think there's more donations than I knew there is.
Yes, it's in your turn.
I mean, five more of them.
Five.
Yeah, because I got, that's 10A back here.
There you go. Oh, thank you.
No, thank you.
Oh, okay.
Oh, yeah, fifty dollars from Ms. Jean...
Weatherly.
Weatherly. Is that fifty from all of them, or each one did fifty?
I think it's each.
Each, okay, so Nancy Wolf, Carol, Ginbatter? Ginbatter?
Ginbatter.
Ginbatter?
Kinsbater?
Kinsbater, we'll take it. Daniel...
Affet?
Affet, affet? And Karen Affet. Need a motion.
So move.
Second and thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye. You got one more here too, under the, no, it's in the chair mail, since you're knocking them out.
Under chair mail, police department, gift account ledger, whatever that is. Alright, from the chief of police, uh, a donation of twenty-five dollars from one and only.
Does it, does it want to name Nancy Albert?
Oh, okay. Need a motion to accept?
So move.
All those in favor?
Aye.
So there's another, there's a second memorandum of agreement that's...
Yeah, I got it right here.
You got the other one?
Yeah, I just want to buy it. Memorandum here between the town of Suffolk and the firefighters local 4919.
Yeah, this is something that Labor Council drafted and went over with the bargaining unit. It's for the implementing the Janus decision by the Supreme Court, removing agency service fee language from the current collective bargaining contract.
Correct.
So that's being done with all five of them.
And how are they accepting that? Most of them are okay?
It's complied to a lot.
Okay.
If, if it remains in the contract, it's void.
Oh, so they need to do something?
Right.
So motion for.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
That looks like that's it for numbers. Now we're gonna go to the chair mail, right?
Yep.
So reappointments. Who are we ready to do tonight? I have the animal inspector.
And a few luck prices.
Yeah, I have Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, Alan Sessler, and local emergency planning committee, Mr. Dunlap, Mr. Fitzgerald, Mr. Sanders, Mr. Clark, and Mr. Hulley.
Brian Hulley.
Brian Hulley, and all one years.
So moved.
Second.
Second. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Now Doug is.
New.
We'll wait for that, okay. All right, folks, if you need to sign that top one. All right, next up is a one-day liquor license. It's actually, I think, there are two separate ones, right? We're gonna do them both separately?
It's two days.
Two days. So we're doing, are we doing together or separate? We can do it together. Okay, it's rugged maniac, folks. And it's Rick Lucculius, an American agent, who has applied. And it's, um, looks like Saturday is from ten to six.
They did not vote on that, they voted on that.
Right, and it looks like Sunday they have written down ten to four.
Usually you do noon.
That's usually noon.
On Sundays.
State my usual thing, and it should be noon-ten.
Yep, so do I just cross it out and change it?
Yeah.
Just your writer, the commissioner.
You'd be surprised where my rights are or not.
Well, it doesn't mean they're gonna follow it either, but that's your writer, the commissioner.
Noon on Sunday.
Yeah, noon on, just on Sunday.
So still good on the Saturday.
Yeah, I write Sunday right above it. Okay.
That's keeping with what we've done.
Yep, absolutely. Damn, they can't, they can't, it's dry.
Kevin, you guys are all set for an instant command point of view, right?
They have insurance, everything looks wonderful.
I heard the chief was doing it this year.
You know, I hear all kinds of rumors, but they have a senior program.
I did it one year, remember?
So they're a nonprofit, the dates are seven, nine-twenty-nine and nine-thirty. It's at Powder Mill Road. We said Saturday is going to be from ten AM to six, and Sunday will be from noon to four. And a motion for.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
That looks good. Mrs. Alberta is all set.
Thank you, sir.
All right, next up is our current electrical inspector, Mr. Simons, his last day will be August ninth, twenty-eighteen. And we have a little bit of a gap, so it look, oh, Gary, come on the phone, boy. So it looks like Agawam is going to be the intern for a couple of weeks, they'll help out.
Yep, you just need to authorize this appointment to be made, and he'll be sworn in, and he will cover that gap in time. When Mark leaves and the Westfield deal kicks in, because their inspector's on vacation too.
And a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Okay. Next up is standards of private ways for snow and ice removal from the DPW.
Yeah, so the old first item under old business.
Yep, old business. I met with, approached the DPW this past week finally. I was, the reason it hasn't been furnished is because I was doing hard to get hold of. So we got over there finally, and basically we looked at all different kinds of plans. We did a great job of mapping out probably eight different towns, plus what Bacon and Wilson gave us.
Right, spreadsheet.
Yeah, the spreadsheet, and then we went back and came up with the one in front of us now. Any thoughts, gentlemen?
So you guys worked out the bold letters stuff, Dean?
Yes, the bold letters is right. So the slope of the road must not exceed ten percent.
Yep.
Roads must have a minimum travel width of twelve feet.
Right.
If they're turning around at the end of the road, if they're going to end road, to allow vehicles to stop while they're turning, you have to. That one was fine. The last one, the travel road must be open and be graded. And there can be no gates, fences, landscaping trees, and no holes, potholes, or profusions rocks, profusions roots. Travel the way over two inches in height. So two inches was the factor. If the portion of the travel road passes over culverts, they must be rated to support H-twenty loading, absolute load of thirty-two thousand pounds, a real load of sixteen thousand pounds. That, I got nervous about because how does the average, I know that, but Randy said, no, the way this works is our engineer would look at that road, because they already exist, and pretty much know all that. So we're not asking that.
The homeowner did.
To work out and.
What's that, is that a loaded, load of truck full of sand or salt ready?
Well, it's the weight capacity of the axles.
Right. So that's the norm of any big truck.
That's an engineering standard for any kind of culvert, you know, mammoth structure, they're all rated for extreme loading.
Right. So maybe.
And obviously, that's important, because we don't want the truck going into the hole.
Right. So if they were gonna plow on the other side of that private bridge we have over there, that's probably where that would come into play, because we don't know the weights on it, and nobody wants to know.
Besides, they're talked to about the truck.
Right, but we'd do our best.
Wouldn't be called a covered bridge anymore, no, no.
Could just be a bridge.
It'd be a commercial.
You know, maybe that would pass with all that weight not on the bridge anymore, that may help the axle rating. You never know, you know, it is what it is.
The minute you know Doug scratched his head.
Yeah, Doug scratched his head. But at least he's not burying his face in his hands like you. So he's getting better, or I'm getting worse. The town will occur, okay, the town will incur only expense for the following maintenance, grading, going, grass within three feet along traveled way. Placing a stone of gravel on a travel portion of the way to make it passable in case of mud or rust. The only expended monies that are allocated for maintenance of private ways open to the public and for the annual budget approval. Okay. That gets into the whole theory that we go back and replant everyone's alarms, because the blade might have took out so many inches. And then number five is. Yeah. Yep. The, not to exceed, okay, five years with the initial down payment or fifty percent of the cost associated with maintenance repairs by the butters to private ways. Town will only spend monies over the budget. For maintenance of private ways based on the linear footage of each butter. Other stuff, town shall, no liability for damages in connection with said maintenance or repairs. What are your thoughts, guys?
Well, the draft was done by the town attorney, so you guys are just.
Yep.
Inserting the standards that we've written, left for you to do.
So the question is, we budget how much today for maintenance of private ways?
Nothing.
Right, so that's, that's the part number five, right?
Yeah.
I think that's why you went to town meeting with that other vote. That's the mechanism.
I understand. So my, my, my point is, is that, so this says here, we'll only spend monies over the annual budget, if the town's annual budget approved, for bona fide emergency repairs required by safe travel over private ways, we budget zero. So essentially, whatever you spend, you're going to assess a betterment. You have the ability to assess a betterment for all of the expenses incurred on a private way, based on a cost, basis cost of zero. Basis budget of zero. Seems reasonable. It's what we passed at town meeting.
Right. Sir?
I think we went to town meeting, and we've done what the attorneys had told us still, and we're trying to make sure that we do things legally. Same token, we're realizing these are still taxpayers of the town of Suffolk, friends and neighbors, and or relatives, and they're citizens of the town of Suffolk, so. As long as we're trying to be reasonable and legal, I think we're doing our due diligence.
And I think we are, you know, a twelve-foot wide road would, would fit one car, and I don't think we have too many of those, right? So we're not, you know, I think it's decent. I don't think we're asking for the, my biggest concern was, how do they jump through these hoops? But like Randy said, that's what our engineer department does for them per se. It's not a, this is it, too bad, let me know when you got everything approved.
Right.
And then we'll comply your street. So the only changes is now we, you know, they do understand if their road isn't really a road, it's not really a road.
Right.
So when they call in screaming twenty-seven times about a pottle, or, you know, a washout, it's, it is and it isn't the town's responsibility.
Right.
I don't think we'd ever turn our back on anybody.
Right.
Period. You know, and then the financial one's the other, the other trigger too, but there are some other streets here that we have, you guys had started that process last year, and I had reached out to him and said, get those other folks in for the other three or four streets that we know of on this list, and then we're gonna have to make a decision about the first three or four that you guys had, or I think you had met with them.
Hmm.
Right, and we still plowed them.
Yep.
So I think now, you know, they were put on warning last year, and.
One of them started plowing themselves. One of them we didn't finish up, but yeah.
No, understood, but you know, it's July now, right, or August, so if we can hack away at that some more, it won't hurt us. So what are you looking for, a motion to approve on this?
Yeah, the director's looking for your motion for you to approve the standards.
Okay. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. It's tough, but it's where you are today. Next up, Herb Pace, my vice principal at Powder Mill. I know you were way back with my understanding elder.
Principal at Consolidated.
I came here, I didn't go to.
So I thought this was right where the Suffolk space was.
Really? Nice. All right, so tomorrow at eleven-thirty, there'll be a short little presentation. He does not want a cake, he doesn't even want people there, but that's too bad. I'm gonna respect his wishes, because I have some previous engagements, so I won't be there. I can give him my best. And it looks like presentation's around eleven-fifty or noon. They're hoping to have you guys there. Oh, you can eat, we eat at eleven-thirty. So peanut butter and jelly for everybody. And a small presentation around eleven-fifty or noon time. So, good luck with that, guys. Ninety-two was the age, they were trying to tell me, but.
Oh, he told them.
Yeah, it's thirty, ninety-two, yeah, he's up there. And it's a nice, this won't be out in time for him to even hear it, but he didn't want anything, so they did a nice plaque that's gonna hang down there, and each year it'll award someone the Herb Pace.
Pace Award, yeah.
Pace Award, yeah. It's right next to that, that E D thing that goes boom, boom, so. Either way, you gotta cover it. It's nice. All right, next up, Randy, let's see. Well, next up is the standards of private ways, let me do that. All right, so this was another copy of that, which we just discussed.
Yeah.
Okay. Goals and objectives. One more week.
There you go.
All right. This was interesting. Placemaking, public spaces.
Well, that's my job.
Ben, do you fly, Vanna fly?
I was supposed to follow them, I haven't gotten around to it.
What's in the table?
Thank you.
Aye, aye, aye. Okay, town of Suffolk employee social media policy, round two.
Yeah, Fred's office drew it up based upon the information that had been collected by the selectmen at the MMA conference, so.
Yep.
You did the first reading at a previous meeting, and this is your second reading. So if you have any questions on the contents of the policy, Labor Council is here.
All right, any questions, gentlemen?
No.
Mr. Moblin?
Oh, sir.
So moved.
Sir, second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, so this is the employee social media policy.
This'll go into the employee handbook update too, right, Fred?
Yeah.
Wonderful. All right, and last but not least, it looks like is the. Notice a vacancy part-time ACO officer.
That's right, Kevin. Fred had worked on a job description for us, and Kevin wanted to have authorization to release, to have the board set the rate. I believe you were suggesting, Kevin, that the cleaners and the maintenance people down there are a little over thirteen, the ACO officers a little over seventeen, so Kevin had determined a price point somewhere around fourteen-seventy-five, but he was envisioning a period of time where there'd be a training for them at a lower hourly rate around the twelve-dollar range. So the board would need to approve that so that we could finalize the posting, because this goes back to your budget process, where you put monies aside so that there would be somebody there to backfill the person on vacations and days like that, so.
I do recall.
Those dollars are in the budget.
Mm-hmm.
Now what you're doing is you're now implementing that process.
Okay. Any questions, gentlemen?
No.
Need a motion to approve.
Motion to accept the chief's recommendation.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
So now you can vote.
Quick question, didn't they, when the legislature just passed special legislation requiring additional training for animal control officers or animal inspectors? I thought that there was something in the legislation.
Oh, was there?
Yeah, but maybe it was animal inspectors, or maybe it didn't pass and it didn't make the cut, I don't know.
I'm sure Kevin can confer with Tracy, who's a member of her association, and they can find out pretty quick.
Right. All right.
Okay.
I had a big record, I thought it had to do with animals in schools. But, you know, we can be double-checked.
I know they were trying to pass something.
Right.
Requiring additional training.
They can't be a member of the company.
Something about more free-range chickens and all that stuff.
Right, but no, this was actual additional training.
It had to do with some of the dead animals, hailing dead animals.
Oh, okay.
Minor collection, but I could.
Okay, so we gotta send DPW too, then, because that's what those guys help us out, they do.
They're too busy going to the OSHA training now, they're too busy.
No, I understand that, but a lot of times those guys would come and take care of that, at least they used to. All right, anything else under old business?
Library? Anything on the library?
I don't see it here.
No, I didn't, I have not received anything from Ben yet on that, you mean the bid package?
Yeah.
Or, no. I can tell you the new library, that the carpet replacement will be a bid, a walk-through next week, and we'll be opening the bids in a few days. Of course, we're working on the surface, so.
Yeah.
Just wanna move the library along so we don't have to heat it through another one.
I will let, I will let Ben know what your wishes are.
Okay, new business.
Quick question. Can anybody explain to me what the state's doing with the line-striking?
I was gonna call you and tell you they were doing it.
To be honest with you.
They started.
They started today, yeah.
But no.
They started several weeks ago.
Well, they milled it, probably two months ago.
Right.
And it's been left, you know, basically no white lines for two months. I did reach out to them several times, asking for an update. All I got was, it's a state contract, and the contract is working somewhere else, and.
Right.
Around the list, they showed up today, so.
For more milling, or did they actually?
No, they, they put some white lines up today.
A couple of white lines today.
Well, they, they just seem that, they kind of staggered the location, they like want a continuous run. I don't know.
I don't know, several years ago, when we went to the meeting in Northampton, and they, when they were doing College Highway, they said it'll last for seven years, and this was the most inexpensive way to do, it was gonna save the taxpayers money. But I've been watching this now for several months, and just to pay details, years ago, it used to, one day, right?
But they had to do the milling first, though.
Right.
It's still a difference.
But it was already milled.
They remilled the whole thing again, I know the white lines they did.
They remilled, yeah, a couple of months ago, they milled the white, they have to, because they can't put new product over the old.
Is that like the tape, Randy? Is that the tape?
Hey, it's not, it's not.
Before it used to be just straight paint, okay, now they're coming in and milling it first, then coming back and doing the painting.
It's a thermoplastic product, and you can't paint.
How are we gonna save money?
They gotta fill the hole that they just made, so it won't be cracked with the thermo stuff.
I don't, I don't see.
It's the same thing with, who needs signs every tenth of a mile on a road to tell you every tenth of a mile you've gone?
It's just crazy.
That's right.
I just hope, can you continue to ask them if they're gonna be done before winter?
I hope so. I also think they're gonna do the yellow lines also, yeah.
Well, that's what I.
Well, they're supposed to do the whole scratch.
Right, those are more important.
Yeah.
Because they painted the directional arrows too, right?
They did that a couple of months ago.
That must, that must be a different contract, right? The arrow contract, the yellow line contract, the middle line and the white line contract.
I like the arrows, it works, if people know how to use them, it works well.
It works well, you can see them too, but right now we have a problem where you can't see the lines.
Right. And it's getting a little confusing. School season's coming, the daylight hours are going, a lot of things.
All right, that was the only other question.
New business?
No, sir.
One thing I have is, so instead of waiting till a month before the budget season to talk about roads and monies, what do I need to do, or we need to do, Carl, to come up with ideas or numbers, and how you either bond it, don't bond it? You know, we talk about it every winter season, right? I come up to you and I, you know, I just say, hey, another five hundred grand, can we get this done, plus this? But is there a better way of doing it ahead of time, so even if it's a no?
Well, I don't, I don't think it's any.
It's never a no, it just.
I mean, I, I think we started looking at the debt service and how it was dropping off last year, and that was, that exercise we went through, it took a couple of months to really update the model.
Right.
But when it was done, that helped us give the information to the selectmen and the finance committee about what was dropping off, and what years where you had the comfort level to go and do those fire apparatus, folks?
No, absolutely.
That was a big part of that.
Right.
So now you'll have other dollars dropping off, so it's just a matter of what else you, identifying what else is gonna also drop off in the next several years, and then identifying what you wanna plug into that, along with this apparatus stuff we're talking about, which actually, the number you was talking, you were talking about, what was it, quarter million? That's a small number over, over a number of years.
Understood.
You could just do that as state house notes. What's gonna be much more important is when we finish this municipal buildings feasibility study, and what that's going to represent for any of the improvements and enhancements that need to be made to the five municipal buildings, because those debt services are dropping off.
Which I understand, but.
So it's all about replacing debt with debt.
Right, but some of that debt needs to be the Russ Fox Memorial Highway.
Free program. Oh, yeah, yeah, no, that's what we talked about.
That's just to paint the lines.
You know, that's, what's that?
That's just to paint the lines.
That's to paint the lines, right.
So really, you know, if you, if you look at the numbers, you were talking about apparatus or rolling stock. If you're talking about bridges and paving.
Bridges and paving.
Okay, then that's a different number, so you figure out, you figure out what number you're interested in, and then we can have models run by our financial advisor.
Next four number of years. Russ, I want a number of what more you wanna spend every year on paving. You have two weeks to give me that number.
Well, the magazine we just got.
I don't read.
From Mass Municipal.
Yeah.
Read it. It's about seventy percent about roads and what other communities are doing. You know, and one mayor was very, was very interesting, read the article, and their community decided, you know what? Roads are the number one thing after schools, and we are going to take care of our roads and get them all reconstructed. And they feel they're saving money, because once they're all reconstructed, then they just do maintenance every ten, twelve, fifteen years, rather than major reconstruction of the road, so they're putting in, this one particular mayor was putting in an additional million dollars a year, along with their million-plus from.
Chapter ninety.
Chapter ninety money, so, and they have.
Was that a million, what was that, a community the size of Westfield? I mean, that million wouldn't.
Yeah.
We, a million might make a big dent for us, I don't know if that does much.
No, this was a twenty-year plan.
I don't know if that does much, if you're talking about a mayoral forum in a larger city.
Right, so, but that was just for an example, I think that's what we're contemplating.
Right.
If we, like, well, Suffield, Connecticut did. Suffield, Connecticut. Suffield, Connecticut bonded to do all the roads. Now you drive down to their roads now. Some of those roads were treacherous and now they're beautiful. But they did all the roads, but they bonded for that. And now they're, now they're, now they're paying it.
I understand that.
An installment.
Yeah.
And you have your interest payment. But I think that's a discussion we should have as a community.
It, absolutely. And it, it puts in, it puts the roads in the same category as other long-lived assets, right? We're trying to pay cash to do twenty-year projects for some of these things, which doesn't work out and we never get done, we'll never get done what, whatever needs to get done. We'll never catch up to the deficit. But, you know, some of these projects that are expensive but worthwhile, but that are gonna have a thirty-year life, well, then it's just like a fire truck or a, you know, a, a building renovation or a new building. You have to finance or look at the financing of it the same way. And that's what we've been talking about. So, you know, Suffield and the, I didn't read the article yet, but I know in Suffield that they had bonded that money and that is the way, you know, it's an approach to do it. And you treat, because it treats that, treats it as an asset, which is what it is. It's an asset of the community and it's gonna, and you, you...
All our infrastructure's assets.
Right.
So what do we need to do to move forward with this discussion?
Well, I think you gotta figure out what dollar value you're looking at, which projects you wanna do and when.
Right.
You know, and then we can have numbers run on what the debt service would be and the length of... No, you're not gonna do a twenty-year note because you probably wouldn't wanna go more than ten or twelve because I start seeing things after ten or twelve years. I mean, they just did paving on a road that was full depth reclamation.
It was a headache, yeah.
You know? Eighteen years ago or something like that, so, twenty years ago, so. There's nothing permanent in this part of the country. People say permanent.
Yeah, understand. So two weeks, I'm hoping the number...
But it's the same difference. To, to your point, Carl, we're gonna look at the, we're gonna go walk through the, on the building assessment. They're gonna find stuff to do at the firehouse, which is gonna roll, is part of the debt we're looking at rolling off. And we're gonna replace that with debt. And there's stuff that needs to be, it's just, it's normal. It's an asset. It ages and changes and everything else. Same thing with a road, right? This has a life cycle too, so...
Those life cycles are all determined.
To a ten- or fifteen-year note on a road is not unreasonable.
No, I just don't, I, I don't wanna get involved with all these buildings and kinda push those roads out another little further. I think we need to tap this...
I thought we committed to it, you know, as far as coming out of the budget season last year was we had the pressing need at, at the F D. And that, you know, the next year was going to be the year that we were gonna really take, and we had, looking at the debt schedule.
Right.
And now with debt rolling off, you know, if, you know, building projects, you know, what comes out of that's gonna have to get...
You also have access led to capacity and proposition to an act.
Well...
So you can also use some of your excess capacity.
True.
But I... Be cognizant of what, you know, of the taxpayers too. Very much so. But if we have debt coming off that, we are looking to replace that with debt so we stay even, even up on the tax rate. That's, but it, it, it's not a bad approach to do some of these large, you know, overall larger reconstruction projects that need to be done. Because, you know, we're gonna spend, you know, we're spending some money now to, to basically paint over some of the roads that, you know, really need more work than we have money to do right now. So we need to find the, the ability to, to, to do what we need to do to, to set these roads up for fifteen or twenty years.
And we should also be talking to our legislators. Because when you have a billion-dollar surplus and they don't put additional monies into Chapter ninety, I mean, somebody's the priority sometimes.
That would've been a great thing to do.
Oh, absolutely.
I don't think are there.
I think I'd make that clear with you guys.
And we need to make it clear to our legislators. And, and if, if it's a letter to all the other municipalities in Western Massachusetts, talk to their legislators too. It's, it's worth sending out that, that letter and buying the stamps. Because the, the state should be stepping up with the Chapter ninety monies. It should be increasing with inflation. We shouldn't be stagnant like we have been, set on this two-hundred-million-dollar figure for...
Well, yeah, when this governor first came in, you had that three-hundred million for one year.
For one year, but other than that it's been...
Every hundred million equates to about a hundred eighty thousand for some of it. So then, then you had the two years. And the M M A and those groups, you know, they're advocating for four hundred or more million, six hundred.
That's where it needs to be.
That's where, right.
Right.
Yeah. I'm not gonna wait forever.
All right, we'll get off our soapbox.
Yeah, but I just, we should look, we'll look, let's move forward with looking at that and not wait till a month before the budget season. So at least we can offer our finance committee something. They don't have to like it. I get it. Like you said, the public, whatever. But if you can't show them anything, then we're not doing our...
If you're gonna change, read, read those articles. Read those articles.
You're making me go back to school. All right. Okay, so that's it for new business. Sergeant's position. That's what we have left before executive. You guys comfortable making a decision? Sucks no matter what, boys. You got, you got great guys. I mean, that's why we have them.
It's late at night, we got Fred waiting. If you wanna wait a couple of weeks, is it critical or...
Not critical. I just know sitting there waiting for that two weeks, the effect it can have on the departments and the morale department.
All right. Fred doesn't mind.
You're more inclined, you're more inclined to want that decision made.
We got, we got, but not telling that we have to fill that spot this weekend.
No, no, but...
Not a necessity within the department to keep it working. More of a morale issue, more of a human compassion issue. These guys sitting on pins and needles for a couple more weeks. Been there and done that.
How much wood you want us to... Yeah, I know.
Well...
Any thoughts from you, sir?
Well, I think we had, the candidates were all outstanding and we've seen some of them before. I think we've had, I thought we had one outstanding interview tonight compared to the others. And the others were, were very good.
Yeah, I mean, you got, you got some depth there.
Definitely. We're blessed in that regard.
We are. Do I dare ask the chief thoughts? In the past, Chief Ricardi has kind of an even. You know, he doesn't really jump out and say anything one way or the other.
Well, someone's been on the job for a long time. It's always been a concern of mine. I have to admit that the chief hasn't gone publicly making, building his team and making the board, you know, publicly aware of what his wishes could be or what his desire for the next... Not knowing which way the board was going to go. I have to admit, I wrote up a recommendation, but I have no problem presenting it to the board if you were willing to hear it.
You all right?
I have no objection as long as, no objection.
I do understand this is a very hard decision for the board to make. It's been hard for me to make this recommendation for just one of those candidates because all of them are all very good choices. I think, I think each one could fill the position with no issues and each would be great in that position. But for me, the one candidate rises to the top this time is Officer Miles. This recommendation is based on the following. Officer Miles is the longest-serving officer and wanted to candidate at this time. But for me, that is not always the deciding factor. I ask, what has an officer accomplished while he has been here? In Officer Miles's case, I have to admit that he has accomplished a lot and has taken on many other duties and tasks. He's been a certified emergency medical dispatcher, an accident reconstruction investigator, a sexual assault investigator, a sexual offender registry officer, computer and camera administrator, public records access officer, court liaison officer, evidence officer, drug surrender coordinator, assistant detective, criminal crimes, and agent for the Board of Selectmen for class-two licenses. So as you can see, it appears he has been a go-to guy for the past and present police chiefs during his twenty years as a patrol officer. I would also like to speak of Officer Miles's education. He does have associate's in criminal justice, but he also has a bachelor's degree in political science with a concentration in pre-law. But besides the college education, I feel compelled to point out the education he received being in a position of court officer for the past twelve years. I firmly believe this education will greatly assist him in teaching and leading his fellow officers in the laws and court procedures of the Commonwealth. As many people would say, police officers have to basically be lawyers in today's age. I think he comes close to that. The last part of Officer Miles's education that really stands out for me is that in the past, Officer Miles has requested to attend a classroom seminar titled Officer in Charge. The class is advertised as, this class is a must for officers serving the capacity of officer in charge as well as sergeants. Officer Miles was unable to be sponsored by this department as he chose, and he chose to pay for and attend on his own this very important class. This showed to me much initiative on his part and the willingness to make things happen on his own. So as hard as it is for me to make this recommendation, again, based on all the great professional candidates we have before you, at this time, I feel Officer Miles is the competent candidate for this position at this time.
So...
Thank you.
Oh, sorry.
No, that, I...
So, you know, appreciate that. And I honestly, I thought that he, he had a stellar interview tonight. I think it was head and shoulders above the others. So...
But I think a lot of that does come with the...
Experience.
Yeah.
And it showed through tonight, I thought. And even compared from the last interview, you know, they, they were all decent. And I say head and shoulders because they were all very good interviews. But you could, I, I saw it coming through tonight in the interview process, just tonight. So I'd say, you know, for the purpose of discussion, I'd put forth Miles for this position.
Sure.
Yeah, any, any one of them, I think, could take this position. I think that agreement, I think Paul had an exceptional interview. Not to take anything away from the others.
No, I agree with you.
Because they've all, obviously, are extremely dedicated. And what they've accomplished for the Town of Southland, they should all be commended.